I'll start with agenda item number one, roll call from my left.
Ed Behr here.
Riley Bergeron.
Bob Hayes.
Paul Jacques.
Darren Finnegan.
Tim DeRoche.
Maureen Hopkins.
In with Stacy's absence, I'll be chairing the meeting and I'm going to elevate Ed Behr as a full voting member this evening. That should give us seven for voting. Bilal is absent as well. Item two on the agenda are the meeting minutes from June 18th again. David, do you want to read a little bit about that?
Sure, yeah. I'm not sure if everybody saw their email this afternoon, but I wanted to provide some clarification. I did talk with the city clerk about the discussion we had last time about whether or not minutes could be approved even though you weren't at that meeting. And the answer is yes. And I guess this comes up sometimes with the council too. But just to put some more detail to that, our policies and procedures talks about how every member of the board who's in attendance, when a question is put to vote, shall unless excluded by interest, give his or her vote unless the board, unless the board for special reasons shall excuse himself. So you could certainly vote no, but you shouldn't necessarily be not voting on the minutes. We talk about Robert's rules, there's reference to Robert's rules in the, in the policies and procedures which we've talked about before, like, let's not talk about Robert's rules, right? If we have our own policies, we're, we're good with that. But from a Robert's rules perspective, they, Robert's rules says you can also vote on minutes if you weren't in attendance. Obviously, that's maybe awkward for some people because they didn't review the minutes, or they weren't at the meeting. You certainly have the ability to watch the YouTube video if you wanted to, make yourself feel more comfortable. So I totally understand why people might not want to vote on them if they weren't there. And then again, Robert's rules talks about, you know, we, we as a board defer to those. But again, if the board adopts their own policies or agrees to go in a certain direction at a meeting, we're kind of on the same ground. So the bottom line is you folks can vote to accept minutes if you didn't attend that. You should be voting regardless. So, you know, if it fails for some reason, I would probably suggest then that we continue the motion to another date because the minutes ultimately should get approved. They should not not pass unless you folks found that there was some glaring errors with them or something like that. And then we would work to revise them.
So the controversy, whatever, or our conflict is probably a better word, was that there were only three of us that are at the meeting now that were at the meeting before. And the same thing with the second half of the meeting, there's three of us that are here now that weren't. So the changes that I asked for were the voting on the first vote on the abstention part, so it's 2-1-1 now, and that, from my recollection, is accurate. It was hard to see on the, the video, you couldn't see how people voted, and we didn't state it directly. So, but that matches what I remember. That was the only change that I had. So I'm ready to pass them if we can. So I'd seek a motion to pass those minutes unless we have any changes.
Seconded.
Okay, so Bob made the motion and Ed seconded it. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. And on the same thing, we have the minutes from the August 19th meeting. I don't have any questions on that, but does anybody have any changes or anything? Okay, so I'll seek another motion then.
So moved.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Nope. All those in favor? Okay, so just for the record, Tim DeRoche made the motion and Bob Hayes seconded it, and it passed 7-0. I actually didn't raise my hand, but I'm in favor. That moves us on. Item three, there's three scheduled public hearings. Item A has been withdrawn. There's a, that's the Fern Street public hearing and subdivision review. I have a letter from the person representing the developer, I guess. "After discussions with both Jim and Eric, we hereby request to be removed from tonight's board agenda and be considered at a future meeting. This request is due to some recent negative public slash neighborhood sentiment towards the project that we want to further consider so ultimately the project can be considered a positive development for all the city and all the stakeholders involved." So I'm glad that developers are listening to the community and wanting to, all parties to be happy. So is that enough, David?
Yes, thank you.
And we'll move on to 3B. This is a public hearing for a site plan and subdivision review for 180 Danville Corner Road. And again, staff, could you tell us a little more about this?
Sure. Terradyne Consultants on behalf of Timothy Millis submitted an application to convert the existing structure at 180 Danville Road into a four-unit multifamily dwelling. This property is located in the general business district, consists of approximately eight acres, developed with a two-story wood-framed building, paved driveway, 10 parking spaces, underground, power, city, city water, and an eight-bed septic system. It was formerly, formerly Spurwink School eight-bed care unit, has been vacant since 2022. With this conversion, they're going to convert it into four one- and two-bedroom apartments. The project involves only interior renovations, there's no exterior renovations planned. As I mentioned, it's in the general business district where we allow multifamilies. This property meets the density requirements by a long shot out there. It seems kind of maybe odd that this is coming to you because we're taking an existing building and we're just putting four units in it, but technically that is a subdivision. When you're taking an existing structure previously used for commercial purposes and you're putting three or more dwelling units, it's a subdivision. You guys have to approve that. So that's why we're here. It's a subdivision. And if it's a subdivision, it's subject to our site plan review standards as well. So the applicant has addressed both those criteria of the site plan review and subdivision standards. One thing to note, the applicant had a site evaluator, look at the original septic design versus the proposed use, and it was termed, determined that an additional 1,250-gallon septic tank is necessary. The leach field is fine, but they need another tank out there, given the number of bedrooms and the change of use from commercial to residential. So they're going to be installing a 1,500-gallon septic tank out there in line with the existing system. That's it. Staff recommends approval of this application. And there's representatives from Terradyne Consultants here. Are any questions?
Yeah, come on up.
Hi, good evening. I'm Jim Corbin with Terradyne Consultants, here to represent the applicant, Tim Millet. I'm also the surveyor for the project for stamping the subdivision plan, which is essentially just a survey of the property. As David said, there are no, this is just a formality. However, we're still excited about this project. We're adding four units to Auburn here, four residential units inside the existing structure. As David said, no, no improvements are proposed beyond the existing structure renovation, interiors, renovation for the units. The site will be served by the existing private septic system. And it currently has public water as well. You'll see there's a drilled well on site that's abandoned, and they're using city water right now, or they will be. 10 parking spots exist. To bring the septic system up to standards for the four units, we will be installing an additional 1,500-gallon septic, septic tank. But the field itself is of adequate size for that. I think that's it.
Okay, are there any questions for staff or the developer from the board? Go ahead.
I'm just curious where this project is in relation to the other applications for...
The one that you've seen before, yes. This is just to the east, southeast to it. So Danville Corner Road LLC, also Tim Millis owns this parcel over here. And that's the one that you've seen in the past for proposed development.
Any other questions? No? Okay, with that then, I'll seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Agreed.
So. Motion made by Darren and seconded by Bob. All those in favor? Darren, do you want it? Yeah, just kidding. So, motion carries 7-0.
Oh, was there...
Oh, I thought you were done, right?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, okay, so we're having public comment. So if you want to speak, you can. But so any members of the public wish to come up and speak? You have five minutes. State your name and where you reside.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road. I want to continue toward the logical end of Mr. Vera's question, which is, does the applicant for the conversion of this parcel have any statement for the public and the planning board whether this parcel is to be conjoined with the abutting parcel to the southwest closer to Washington Street in any form of common ownership or common development activity?
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no more members of the public wanting to speak, I seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
So, motion made by Bob Hayes and Darren, did you do the second? Okay, seconded. And all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. So I had the same question that Mr. Beal had for the developer. I don't know if you can come up. Do you want to answer that, if you can?
Yeah, yeah. Quick answer is potentially. If that were to be the case, the existing structure would be part of that greater concept.
Chairman.
Yeah.
I guess I need a little more clarification then. Is the land that we see depicted on this plan, was that part of the total acreage for Mr. Millis' earlier proposal, or is his...
No, that was not. This only recently became, came under purchase and sale agreement.
Would it be helpful if we pulled that up on the map?
I guess that it would be. I think if I understood your answer, your answer is that none of this land was under consideration before for the 40...
Correct.
Are you able to do that, David?
Should be a tax map within the application. Maybe section...
Well, I mean, actually, I'm not, this might help imagine the memo. I understand, this is the property being considered tonight. And I believe, Jim, this is the property that the other Danville project?
That's correct, yes.
And this would be with the television studio across the street?
Correct.
I think what you're saying, Jim, is this property is, was purchased after the parcel next door.
Correct, yes. I believe that parcel to the north was purchased in 2024, and this parcel just south of it that we're speaking of tonight was recently purchased.
Does that handle it, Ed? Okay. Any more questions? Okay, we can, if anybody wants to discuss it, or no? Nothing? Okay, then I guess I'll open it up to a motion to approve or whatever, deny.
I make a motion that the proposal meets the requirements of sections 60-1277 and 60-1359, and approve the application and site plan submitted by Terradyne Consultants LLC on behalf of Timothy Millis to convert the existing structure at 180 Danville Corner Road, PID 122-005, into a four-unit multifamily dwelling. The proposed project has met the standards pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2 Site Plan Review, and Division 4 Subdivision.
Okay, so motion by Riley Bergeron and seconded by Ed Behr. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Motion carries 7-0. And item 3C then is a... Your time's up. Item 3C then is, it was a sub-public hearing and site plan review on 530 and 538 Poland Road. It's been requested to postpone it. Do you need, you, did you want to talk about that, David?
I guess I can kick it off and then what they're looking to do, and then turn it over to the consultant. Initially, Terradyne Consultants, again, on behalf of Jonah Chappell and Kyle Romick, initially submitted an application for a four-lot subdivision in the construction of two multifamily structures with four units each at 530 and 538 Poland Road. The property's split zone between the T42B and industrial district. Access was going to be provided by a new private road. All the development was going to be limited to the residential district. After staff, discussions with staff, the applicant is interested in revising the layout to potentially add a third building to it. They think that'll be more cost-effective and align better with the form-based code requirements as well. So after talking with them, we decided we should be withdraw this or postpone it. And they thought, given that we did the public notice, and they are well into their design, they thought it would be a good opportunity to get some input from you folks and potentially any neighbors. So they asked that we continue with the hearing tonight, asking you folks to open it up for discussion, both amongst yourselves and the board. You'll see in your application, both the initial project in there, it had two lots with a kind of a straight road going in there, and then a schematic that is going to need some more design work and whatnot. And staff really hasn't reviewed it at this point because we don't have a full application, but something with a more curvilinear road and three structures out there. So again, at the applicant's request, the board's asking to postpone this item until further notice. When the applicant submits a revised plan and application, we will do a public notice, notify all the abutters again. So the process will kind of start over at that point. So again, I think the action would be to postpone the hearing, but also open it up for discussion amongst you folks and any comments from the public. And Terradyne is here to explain a little more about what they're thinking about doing.
Anybody have any questions for staff before Terradyne comes up?
I'm unclear as to where this is based upon the scant information we have. So do we have some sort of a location map that would give me a better idea of what the abutting properties are?
No, but if you give me a minute, I can pull up the city's...
So it's between Rodman Road and Hotel Road, right?
That's correct.
Up towards the, like, the main waste of energy area. It's not next to it, but...
Washington, yeah, then Rodman over. There you go. Poland Road, and then, there we go. A little bit from there, right there.
Zoom back out, yep. Rodman Road, Poland Road, Mid-Waste Energy back down here type thing. Zoom in. These three properties right here. One, two, three.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good evening. My name is Jeff Amos. I'm an engineer with Terradyne Consultants, and I'm here on behalf of the applicants to introduce the project and to hopefully get your input and input from the abutters. If possible, we always like to get input as early as possible. Just one last thing. So as David mentioned, we had a different layout that was really predicated upon maximization of the entire property, even the industrial zone. You know, the applicant's, one of their first projects, they imagined a quick and easy rezoning process back there. And anyhow, after much discussion, they've, they've understood that this first phase really needs to be maximized for itself and as a standalone project. And you can't, you know, anyway. So, so this new layout that we have features, features three, four-unit buildings. There'll be a, a new private way that that provides access to all three new buildings, as well as Lot 1 right here. House that has a driveway right now that goes on to Poland Road, that will reroute the driveway to the new private way. So all, all properties on this will access the new private way. The, so one of the reasons why we want to be here is that the form-based code is discretionary. And, and even this layout, this layout, I think, is much improved. The, the fronts of the buildings face the new private way. They'll be raised up, so there's a front stoop on each. We have street trees. You know, the buildings are right up front of the lots, really meeting most of the criteria. One of the criteria that it does not meet basically is about the, the building, the, the lot width, and as it relates to the frontage build-out. So the, the code requests 60% minimum of that the building front is 60% of the front of the lot width, and that the lot width be 120 feet maximum. So that's really the only ones that we're not meeting. And so, so we have the section of lawn up front here, the lot are about one sixty feet here, the widest point of each one. This one down, we put it in here at the parking lot that's on the side of it. And these two buildings will share the, the parking area that's between and behind those buildings. You know, we could certainly do some unorthodox lot lines and have open space on there, but really that just amounts to lines on a page. You know, in, in essence, it's going to be the same development regardless of how we draw the lot lines. So that, that is the, the one piece that we would have to ask for a waiver of those standards when, when we come back for, for our official submittal. Let me just talk about the project in general. So the site up front, as David mentioned, is, we're in the, the rural zone. Here's the zone line right here, right near the site, where it's residential, and then the industrial behind it. And so, as you see, all, all units are in the residential zone. The, the site right now is very flat in the residential zone. It's, it's, you know, there's a, you see your plans, it's a 249 contour that runs through the whole thing. It's perfectly flat. So what we will do for stormwater is we're going to take the, all the runoff to the rear of the property, beyond those wetland areas that starts to drop off. And in our previous iteration of this, we had a stormwater pipe that, that took the entirety of, almost the entirety of the development area and took it out back. So we'll be following that same protocol for, for this. The site will be served by, there's a sewer line that runs right by it. We're going to tap right into the sewer line. And these three buildings will be hooked on gravity sewer. Water obviously will be extended to the site. There'll be a fire hydrant on the site per request of the fire department. And then electric will be dropped from the poles in Poland Road to underground power, to transformers feeding each building. And as you see, we have street trees, proposed street trees on here. One of the things that we're proposing on this, the applicant is proposing a six-foot-high stockade fence around the entire edge against residential reporting. It's currently shown stopping right here, but after discussions with some neighbors, we will be extending that to the edge. There's also a, one of the notes on this plan, the, 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 that is shown with a painting here, based on discussions with the public on it, we'll be proposing that for, or on this side, it would be commercial building. But that, I guess that's the, the high-level view of the project. We certainly want your input and anything that we can get from the public. Thank you.
Does anybody have any que, I'm still formulating mine, but...
I do.
I have a few questions, but given the unorthodox review that we're sort of not doing tonight, could we hear from the public first and then maybe have our questions informed by their comments rather than...
I just had a quick question about the existing home. I think Ed has a good point, too. Yeah, so I'll go forward to that. Could you talk to me a little bit more about the existing home that's on the site, please?
Sure. It's, it's currently under renovations. I think it's a two-story home. There's a,
So that home is not part of your project, correct?
It's, well, it's part of, it was part of, on the properties that were purchased by the applicant. The lot line will be modified and the drive will be rerouted. So it's certainly not part of, it won't look like the other three buildings, and the building will stay pretty much as it is, but we will incorporate the driveway onto the new road.
Is it currently occupied?
I don't believe so. No.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're, we're ready for public comment then, right? So I'll seek a motion to open public comment.
So moved.
Seconded.
So. Motion made by Tim and seconded by Darren. All those in favor? 7-0. Public comment is open. So if anybody from the public wishes to speak, you have five minutes. Just state your name and where you live.
My name is Kelly Levek, and I live at 5 Rock Hill Avenue. I'll show you on the map. Now, coming into this meeting, I had no idea that there was going to be a unit put right behind my house. I have no idea how they're going to fit a road and then a big unit in between that little piece of land. I do have a picture of how wet our backyard gets, so drainage was a big concern of mine. Does anybody want to see it? Very wet.
Okay.
So that was one concern. I knew they were going to put a road in, so I was worried about the snow removal. Where's all that water going to go? So, and I was concerned about a fence put all the way behind our house, which they said that they would do originally. I was told it was going to be an eight-foot fence. Now it's a six-foot fence. I would prefer an eight-foot fence. I was worried about the lights. So apparently they're going to do some kind of light study for that parking lot. I want to make sure that gets done. And there was concern about where they were going to put the dumpster, and they said they were going to move that as well. So as long as they do move it, that's fine. But, yeah, I'm not happy about that unit right behind my house. I don't know how they're going to fit that in there. Tiny home, maybe? Those are my concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public wishing to speak?
My house is here.
Can you identify yourself for the record and everything?
Yeah, name and address.
Nine Rock Hill Avenue, so right in the middle of...
Nine Rock Hill Avenue, so right in the middle of her and this property here. Right now it's just all woods, that's where my backyard is. It's one of my woods, but it's just all dead lawn. It fills with water in the spring, real badly. Wetlands marked off, guy went and marked off the wetlands.
So you'd be destroying the wetlands. Now, when the water table, when the snow melts in the spring, water table rises and so it's almost like a constant flood through my basement where the water gets pumped down through there and then it goes to down the stream. I'm concerned where the water's going to go because I'm sure I'm not going to be able to pump that water into that parking lot. And so I guess I'm concerned about that waterway.
Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Can you wait till you get to the microphone? Yes.
Steve Leveque, 5 Rock Hill Ave.
Thank you.
I don't get how they're going to put this building from my line into driveway. Right now, there's no rule. So I'm wondering how that's going to happen. Because from the house to the line, there's probably room enough for a road.
Not an apartment building? How's that going to happen? I don't get it. Because at first, we're talking about two buildings. Now there's three. That I'm not okay with that. Two was fine, but three, that's right in my backyard. I'm not happy with that.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Okay, seeing none, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Motion made by Tim and seconded by Bob. All those in favor? Motion carries seven, zero. So you want to just start over here with Ed's side and just go around and say with questions?
Thank you. I'll ask one question of staff and you can hold your response if you want until you've heard everybody else's comments, but since I've been on the board, I've reviewed, I think, at least a couple of these form-based code projects. This is the first time tonight I heard it from the representative engineer. And it was also stated in the application for Fern Avenue that was pulled that somehow this is a discretionary review. So I'm going to want some training on what exactly it means that it's discretionary review because it seems to contain standards that say shall do this and shall do that. So I'm not sure what is discretionary and what isn't. And if we have discretion, why isn't that a variance from the standards as opposed to a mere waiver of a submission requirement? You can answer now or you can wait, it doesn't matter.
I can answer it if you'd like. There is, and I don't have, I could pull it up actually, maybe from the, I brought the Fern one with me. There's specific language in the form-based code section that talks about waivers of the form-based code provisions that the board can actually grant. So when we're doing our review, ideally, we're going to identify these or the applicant's going to identify that they need some type of relief from these. So in this case, they are looking for, I guess it was lot width ratio, that 60% that they're talking about. So again, staff hasn't really spent much time with this, but that ability does exist in the form-based code provision. It speaks specifically to you folks having that ability to do that.
Can I add on to that? Just since we started this T42B and put it into existing lots that have been around for a long time, it has created issues like this with trying to fit developments into an area that was designed for a house on, you know, 25 feet off the street, generally speaking, and nothing behind it in a lot of the neighborhoods and things like that. So regardless of what the waivers would be or something on this, but that kind of stuff always has to be considered just because of how we fit this zone into spaces that were designed for, you know, other thoughts in mind back with other common...
I think that's, I think that's why the discretion was written into the zone because we were going to face some of these, not non-conforming, but potentially like, I think that's why it was written into D42B that we had discretionary waivers.
Yeah.
Come across this more often when there's new developments in that zone.
Yeah, and usually the building design takes care of the setbacks and frontage things or the layout of the lot, the roadway in through and stuff. And that seems to be challenged on this one. So we'll have a lot to discuss when you come back.
So the horse may be out of the barn, but I guess I just have some question about why we can exercise such waiver authority under this particular provision of a zoning ordinance when we don't have any authority to waive the lot size requirements or road frontage requirements in other zones? I'm just not sure that...
Great question.
I'm not sure we're grounded to have that, but perhaps we do. As for this particular project, I am a little concerned about stockade fences in general and maintenance of those types of improvements once an approval has been granted. It seems that in a few years, especially in what I gather is kind of a wet area, stockade fences start to lean and heave and rot and they become an eyesore very quickly, I think. So I would like to see something other than a stockade fence. I really don't have an opinion on the height of the fence. That's just an observation and I am mindful of the abutters' comments about the wetlands and I would want to be assured that any wetland disturbance that's occurring is explained to us and that the developer be prepared to demonstrate that there isn't going to be any unintended consequence for the abutters who apparently have drainage issues already.
I completely agree with Ed with the water runoff issue, that if that compounds the problem for the people who already spoke, I need to be convinced that if the development is presented again, that there's drainage issues that will not negatively impact the people who have spoken, who already experienced those seasonal problems.
And on Ed's note with the buffer, in this case a fence, I think if it can be the natural screening, I think is a more long-term answer. I know it takes several years for those things to grow unless you put in taller ones, but I think that might be something to consider. Instead of a fence, they will get taller than a fence, too, because other than having a 35-foot fence, it's not going to screen the buildings very much. Any other? You going, Bob?
I guess I do have a question and maybe a comment, too. In the same light, recognizing maybe now how 4.2B has superseded something before, I think it would be interesting to see what was allowed before, what was the previous zone. The other question would be, how has LD 2003 affected its 4.2B or would have affected the previous zone?
The other maybe concern is that as we get into form-based codes, they're much more restrictive and demanding than previous types of land use zoning. And with respect to the fencing issue, you know, if we're looking for something durable and more long-lasting, unfortunately, one of the restrictions for fencing is no chain link, no vinyl, no split rail or barbed wires allowed. So especially in this day and age, I think there's always been a question of the use, even for siding. I know some codes don't allow vinyl siding, but that is a material that's frequently used and also has a longer life than many other types. So I think that, I think as we, and I think that's the reason Israeli suggested is that's why we're coming back with some of these developments and requiring a little more look at so that we, as well as the public, become more aware of how different code changes have changed things and even from the state level with LD 2003, what impacts that is having on discussions and actual use.
The one thing I guess I could speak to on that with respect to LD 2003, in a nutshell, what they're proposing out here is not the result of LD 2003. It would have been allowed anyway. LD 2003 is more about accessory dwelling units and allowing some additional development in that succession. So whatever was passed through that legislation wouldn't necessarily be tied to this. Interestingly, the most recent housing bill that becomes effective in September that we have to make changes for by next July would potentially remove this, I need to double-check this, but potentially remove this from subdivision review. Talks about the creation of three lots and I believe that's going to bump up to four lots or more than four lots. So there's going to be, you're giving me a five, so I'm thinking it's five. So if this is a four-lot subdivision, when we make that ordinance change, this would not actually be subject to subdivision review. It may still come forward to you folks for some other provision of our ordinance, but it wouldn't be a subdivision at that point. We can check the zoning, though, and see what the zoning was out there previously just as a comparison.
Any more questions? None on my right? Okay. So we just vote to postpone then?
Yeah, you should make a motion to postpone. I know they're anxious, but I don't know whether we'll see them in October or sometime after, so a simple motion to postpone would be appropriate.
Okay, well, I hope we can make something happen here that everybody can live with on there. So with that, I'll seek a motion to postpone item 3C.
I'll make the motion to postpone item 3C. I would prefer that we be able to postpone it in such a fashion that the public notice doesn't have to be published again at expense to the developer, provided the abutters get notice. Is that feasible?
While I like that idea, honestly, I don't have a problem doing the notice again and in part because of, while in an ideal world, if anybody had a concern, they would have received notice this evening about this hearing and they would have learned about the changes. At the same time, it was advertised as something different at that point, so...
That's fair enough. I understand, that's right. It's a different project than what was advertised. I'll simply make a motion to postpone further review.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion made by Ed Behr and seconded by Bob Hayes. Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries seven, zero. Next, public comment, right? So with that, I will open the general public comment. If anybody from the public wishes to speak on matters that aren't on the agenda. Five minutes, Mr. Seer?
Well, may I ask a question before my time begins?
You've earned that privilege, I think, with you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. The withdrawn proposal is no longer an agenda item. Not that I wish to discuss it in length, but it serves as an example for my comment. I asked the board, so...
I'm okay with it. Go ahead.
So first, I want to speak to something that Mr. Behr just said.
Who are you, by the way?
I apologize.
Just kidding.
Well, you called me by name.
I know.
Evan Seer, 122 Granite Street.
Thank you.
While it is true that there are plans referred to as discretionary plans in the form-based code, those refer to plans that are required to go in front of the board, i.e., they are not projects by right. They require the discretionary overview with the planning board. So I absolutely appreciated that comment. Ed, the waivers that are described there are not necessarily dissimilar from other waivers that are allowed within the ordinance. And they do require that the applicant demonstrate that the waiver itself also meets the intent of the form-based code. So it's not like discretionary, like, well, it would just be really nice if our building didn't have to cover 60% of the frontage. Okay, so it's not quite that discretionary. Having said that, so I will use the withdrawn proposal as an example only because it utilized land that was purchased from the city. And oftentimes, when this land is purchased from the city, it comes with purchase and sales agreements along with continuing agreements of obligations, and that's fairly standard. And I would ask the board to consider developing a policy that when such a property does come before the board, that you are also provided with the purchase and sales agreement and any other documents like a continuing obligation document. I say that only because the withdrawn proposal was withdrawn. I'm not going to discuss the merits of it because it no longer exists. However, there was interplay between the application itself, the purchase and sales agreement, and some things that the applicant had agreed to in an ongoing, I forget the exact name here, but a legal document. And I think it would have been pertinent for the planning board to have that information. I think without that information, it's possible for the planning board to make a decision, unknowingly allowing something to happen that maybe wasn't allowed due to some kind of deed restriction. And again, those really only occur mostly with those city-purchased properties because the city's selling them at, often at discount, for the purpose of promoting specific type of development. I also think it's important that applications be complete. I've gone through several cycles on the planning board where there were times when we would get applications that were like Ts crossed, Is dotted to the Max. And sometimes when, periods of time, we were asked to grant lots of conditions. And a condition around screening when an applicant provided trees, but the planning board believes there weren't enough trees and are willing to tell staff what tree should be there and making that a condition, for instance, would be different than an application that has inadequate water or sewer outlined in their plan. That's, those are like apples and oranges. And the way that you avoid that is just by working with staff to make sure that while the applicant wants to get in front of you, I know you want to see it, I know staff wants to see things move forward, and not just to move them forward, to move good projects forward. It does avoid headache and having a special meeting or even waiting an extra month can sometimes avoid some of that conflict that you see, some of those issues that could really cause a project to get tabled in the first place or postponed, so... I do have copies of my original public comment if anyone's interested. However, I'm not going to, again, say it right now because it's not necessarily pertinent to the current agenda. Thanks.
Would anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Good evening, my name is Lindsay Biel from 10 Fern Street.
Can you get...
Is this there?
That'd be great, yeah.
Okay. I'm Lindsay Biel from 10 Fern Street. I live there with my son. And I only have a short comment tonight, but it was also about the item A tonight. I was quite shocked to see the direction this project was taking. And can I echo in my name? And echoing my neighbor's comment that we didn't have a lot of information in between. It was a complete switch with a full plan for something completely different. And that's concerning because that would change the complete atmosphere of the neighborhood. Whatever they build on that land is what I will see directly from my living room. And what was on this plan was a complete wall. So that is scary. And I thank you for your time for listening. And I hope you consider that as the project progresses. And one last thing, I am also concerned with how long it is taking for the playground to reopen for the children of my neighborhood. It's not been two summers that my son cannot play with his friends on the street because this is all blocked for construction. And I wonder how many more years, especially if we're heading another project like that, before the kids can play on the street again together. And that is all from me, thank you.
You bet. Yeah, go ahead.
My name is William Baxter from 27 Holly Street. I regret to inform you that I am also here about 3A, which we were not discussing today. I want to reinforce some of the things that were said by the previous citizens. I agree with all of them. The property abuts mine directly from the back. I was part of the original citizens committee that was called in to overlook or look over, shall I say, some of the original plans, which involved a childcare center, concerns about a basketball hoop, upgrades to the public playground, upgrades to the garden, none of which has really materialized. I don't blame the developer for that. These things happen, gets in the way. But the idea that they would then be considering breaking ground on another five-unit construction there is, kind of feels like a rug pull to the community in terms of what was approved of, what we agreed to, what we were all expecting, and then what is now being planned. There was discussions about providing public good. I understand from a legal standpoint, housing is a public good. From economic theory standpoint of something that is free and available to everybody, something that is non-exclusionary and non-arrival risk, housing does not fulfill that obligation in a way that I think we all were hoping whatever was happening on that land would do. So yeah, you know, some things to consider as presumably it will make its way back here or perhaps it will wait until July of next year and then it'll no longer be subject to this review, if I heard correctly about someone talking about that.
Don't quote me on that entirely, but there are changes that are coming.
Sure. That's terrifying. So I'm terrified about that.
No.
Let's put that in the record. I don't like that.
I'd be happy to talk with you in more detail.
Wonderful, maybe we'll do that. Thank you all very much.
You bet. Anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, with that, I'll seek a motion to close. Actually, I can just close public comment on this one. Public comment is now closed. And that leaves us, whatever number it is, we're on miscellaneous now. My screen went blank.
I have nothing for you.
Okay, does anybody else have any miscellaneous?
Just let you know that I won't be here in October, but we're not gonna be getting the comprehensive plan for our review before then.
No, certainly not, no.
Okay, I guess that's what I had understood from.
The wheels are turning very rapidly.
You may be getting an update.
Okay.
But you're not, no, a plan to review, no.
I thought we had some involvement as of October.
I didn't go to the last meeting, so I don't have any update from that, but Riley might.
Yeah, we did, we're working on the main statement. We had a visioning workshop where we broke into groups and had a lot of the, used the public input that we had gained, gathered over most of the summer through the different open houses and surveys and the website and did a series of, in different groups, a series of prioritizing and grouping thoughts together that surprisingly amongst the different groups, we came to a lot of the tables had a pretty similar, very similar, I guess priorities or topics that made the list of things that are gonna be worked towards our final statement. But with, I believe, next month or this month, we're having another one of those workshops where we're gonna be working on it. So we haven't actually had our vision statement finalized yet. And we're still working on that, but I guess that's the update.
So most of that part of the meeting you were talking about was the part that wasn't televised, right?
Yeah, and if it was televised, it wouldn't have been, there was a lot of, everybody was talking, so it would have been hard to mic up or be understandable. But it was, I thought it was for as many different people with bringing different things to the table and also how much of different data we gathered for the certain things like open space and community center and things like, these certain kind of topics all seemed to surface from each group as a priority. And it was, I thought that was a pretty, it deemed a much more useful, or not useful, but organized result than I thought might come out of it.
Yeah, I guess, sorry, when you said, are we gonna have the comprehensive plan? I was taking that as, are you gonna have a draft document to be reviewing? My, if I jump to that, my apologies. The intent is that staff and the chair from the committee are gonna provide an update just as to where we are in the process at this point.
If it was important, I would have canceled my trip to Italy. Just want you to know how much it means to me.
We could have just zoomed you in and, you know. Do the PAL Center open last weekend?
It did.
Did you go to the opening or anything?
I was unavailable, but there was ribbon cutting for it.
I just, we worked really hard on that whole area and I didn't, I just was, I couldn't go because it was during the workday kind of a thing, so I really wanted to hear.
Folks are very excited about it.
Oh, good. So the street closing is okay and?
I haven't heard anything.
That was the biggest part of it, but.
David, I've had a few people ask me if, and I can't say anything to them outside of public forum anyway, but I also don't know myself, what's going on with Chick-fil-A, if anything.
I reached out to them last week, actually, with the same curiosity, just looking for an update from them. They emailed me back saying that they're making progress and they hope to have an update for me in the future. So yeah, it's still in the works, as I understand.
Thank you.
Anything else? Oh, sorry, Bob. I gotta look for my left.
Going back to our earlier subject. I can understand why we haven't moved forward with staffing issues and so forth and for the corporate supply and effort going on. I was pleased to see one Connex box move off of Park Ave. I'm hoping it's not the one that I saw, or hey, the same box being maneuvered off of Hotel Road and I think ended up on a back road parallel to Hotel Road. Just maneuvering that off of Hotel Road to go into one of the back roads looked very tricky. So it just raised the question again that it is an issue that needs to be addressed and somehow getting back to where and what type and so forth. So I look forward to that discussion. Maybe it is part of what's gonna come through corporate's plan as well.
Yeah, we haven't forgotten that discussion here. And you're right, I mean, we're down staff right now. So it's kind of on the list as well as updating the policies and procedures for the planning board amongst a million other things that need to do. But Connex is towards the top of that list, for sure.
Thanks for bringing that up, Bob. That was a, that was a rough time. We spent a lot of time on that and then it just kind of fizzled and went away.
But it did get one, obviously, that was out of place. So I thank the city for that because I think that took some effort.
Bob's got trackers on all those little boxes, right?
Well, I have to admit, I was an abuser earlier, so.
Okay. I think we're done here, right?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, folks.
Riley and then Tim on the motion.